What are you, what are you doing to me, John?
I'm sorry, I got confused. I'm just, I'm messing with you, I guess.
Throw me out in the trash, that's fine.
Not the trash, our, our, our attendees are not trash, Paula.
Just me.
Well, I'd like to get started, but there's only the three of us right now. Uh, there we go.
I got a text from Charlie. I got a, I got a text from Tony. He had, he was so busy with his work, he wouldn't be able to get to us until six.
Okay, and I don't believe Steve Davis is able to join us either. And Shelley said she'll be late, so we are all accounted for anyway. With that,
Ingrid here?
Ingrid just joined us, yeah.
Oh, she did. Hi, Ingrid.
Snarkiness, Charlie? There is some snarkiness coming from you.
I said you weren't here. You're present, but you're not here.
There, there is some truth to that.
All right, well, uh, it looks like we have all the people we're gonna have anyway. And we have the, uh, the bunker of Deborah, Steve, and Yvette. So, uh, I guess, let's get started. We have a survey question presentation by Keith Frederick. Keith, take it away.
Okay, do, you want me to walk through this, or you want me to put it on, want me to put it on the screen, or what?
Yeah, if you want to put it on the screen and, and take us through it, that'd be great.
Okay, let's try to do that. I'm hitting shared screen.
Jonathan, are we, um, like I've read through the survey, um, that Keith has shared with us. Um, and there's some immediate concerns I have, so should we just wait till after it's all presented and then come back, or how are we looking at this?
I, I, it's a work session, so we can do that. Keith, what do you feel most comfortable with? Kind of doing it, uh, question by question, or would you rather like, present the whole thing in its entirety and then come back? It's up to you.
No, I'd, I'd like to know if anybody has concerns, what they want. I'm, I'm not getting any luck here trying to share. I, I just got a new computer and it gave me a new kind of Zoom that doesn't seem to be acting the way Zoom usually acts. Maybe because I don't, who, who's controlling the screen?
Uh, I have, I am an administrator of the meeting, um, and you're a panelist. Uh, let's see if there's...
Because when I try to hit, when I hit shared screen, it doesn't come up with any content in it. Yeah, it's just acting bizarre.
Well, if, if a hundred percent of, if a majority of what you want to present on is a survey, we can, we all have that.
Okay, if you got hard copies or you got copies on your machine, like, we can just reference it by number.
Does, does everybody have that? Okay.
If it's good with you guys, I'll see if I can pull it up on my screen and just share it so that everybody watching and stuff has access to it.
That'd be cool.
Okay.
Yeah, so, um, go ahead, hit, hit me with, hit me with whatever your concerns are.
Uh, Paula, you're muted.
Sorry, I've got two mouses here. Let me put one away. Has nothing to do with this.
Then they're mice, aren't they?
Or mice, two mouses, two mice, whatever they are. Um, so, um, my first concern, Keith, though, is just kind of the direction of this. I, when, um, uh, when I had looked at this and in some previous conversations, we had talked about a possible repeal and replace kind of thing and, and not trying to repeat what we did two years ago. So, this, when I kind of read through this real quickly, it kind of felt like, okay, we're just going back two years. And, and I want to make sure that in our direction in asking these questions, number one, that, um, there's a feeling of, um, we're looking at alter, you know, alternate ways of, um, doing these, um, you know, looking at a alternate way of, um, finding the money for this. And, and so, um, to just go back two years and ask for the same thing again, doesn't feel like that to me. So that, that was, the primary concern is, you know, would we go back and ask the same thing that we asked two years ago that failed? And so I kind of like the idea of a repeal and replace with a slightly lower tax. The other thing that kind of jumped out to me is my sense in earlier discussions too about this poll, or, um, this poll was the idea that, um, that looking at this tax increase would mitigate, um, or at least lessen the need for these five percent water rate increases every year. And I'm not seeing that at all. I'm seeing this as, on top of your five percent water increase for the next 10 years annually, we, we wanted to charge you a, a tax, we want to also increase your taxes. And so that is my second concern on this is, um, this was meant to kind of lessen the impact um, of what people are handling financially in this town. And, and that's what I'm looking for in this is, what are some alternatives to just seeing, uh, you know, as imposing these huge water rates and that type of stuff. So those are my two concerns. And when I read through this initial poll, both of those kind of, you know, my hackles got raised a little bit.
Okay, well, let, yeah, let's talk about it, because, uh, you know, obviously this is a draft and we want to make it right. I, I remember a discussion about repeal and play and replace in one of the first conversations I had on this. But I'm, I'm fuzzy on what that memory was. I thought we, I thought there was a conclusion come to whatever group was on that call that that was complicated or wouldn't really work or didn't really get us anywhere. So let's revisit that. Tell me how that might work and what everyone feels about that idea. Because as I recall, there's, there's a currently a sales tax in place that sunsets? Is that correct?
Yeah.
That's what you're referring to here.
Right.
There's an existing half cent that sunsets in 2025, and, and I'll just speak and Charlie can jump in as well, or you can, you know, lead it, Charlie. But my recollection from that meeting, uh, that I think Charlie was in on is that, um, you know, we, we had, there's some concern about like, you know, if we pass this tax, we're still going to have to go back in two or three years and then renew the existing half cent. Because this is the additional potential half cent or three quarters of a cent doesn't contemplate that additional, the, the original half cent going away. So we'd still have to deal with it at some point as well. So I think there was a sense of, well, let's just deal with the whole thing. Then I think, talking with you, Keith, you know, some of the feedback was things that you do that make it more complicated and have to have a campaign to explain intricacies doesn't do as well. And that, so I think that at least the people who are on the call, and I, Charlie, I don't remember if you were on the call or not, but I think the general consensus was like, let's not, let's make it as, as uncomplicated as possible. Partially based on your recommendation. If I, if I'm not remembering that correctly, that came from someone else, or it just got missed.
Because, you know, let me, let me see if I got this right. You got a half cent in right now that's in for another four years. You want to add on top of that, if we can, three quarter of, of a cent. So you either ask for a new three quarter of a cent, like, is, that's what the poll does right now, or do you ask for one and a quarter, repeal the half, but add one and a quarter?
Yes, that, that, that was, I think where you had said is, one and a quarter sounds like a whole lot.
Yeah, so how is that, explain to me how that sounds better and how that helps the taxpayer at all?
Well, I didn't expect a, uh, three quarter cent sales tax. Um, and, and maybe that's part of it. And Ingrid's been waving her hand, so she may want to jump in on, oh, something else, okay.
I'm just eating and I don't want y'all to see me eating, so I've been kind of, sorry.
I wasn't sure what that was. It's like, okay, um, no, but that, so I guess I, and I wasn't in on the conversation with, um, you, Keith, when people kind of moved forward on this, you know, we had representatives sit down and meet with you. I just did not, like I said, I, number one, I didn't expect it to start that high. Um, and, um, so again, it gets back to that feeling of, you know, um, deja vu. We did this two years ago, you just, you said no, okay, we're going to ask you again. So how, how do we do the messaging on that? That we're looking, we still need the help, we still understand what you're saying. We've just did a water rate increase to take care of a lot of infrastructure. We've increased your water rates by thirty-nine plus percent, um, but we still want point seven five, five percent, uh, uh, seven, five percent, point seven five, let me do this right, a three quarter cent sales tax.
Yeah.
And to me, that's like, okay, well, let's double dip on this. We got them one way, now let's go back and get them another way. And that's not what we want to do.
And I, I think, I think that's probably really wise thinking, um, because they said no, and in the meantime, you put it, you put a water rate increase on them, and now you can add something else on them.
Right.
Basically, water system.
Part of that original point seven five, I mean, three quarter cent sales tax three years ago was to pay for streets and infrastructure. So now we're going back to them saying, we still need you to pay for streets and infrastructure, and we're going to ask you for the same rate on top of what we're just, you're going to see in your water bills now.
Okay, well, uh, obviously there's two separate issues to, to resolve here. How, how we ask the ballot issue, whether we include a repeal and replace, and then whether any of the new sales tax money is going to go to mitigate water rate increases. And, and that would be either increases they already have or increases that you've got planned every year, or will be implemented every year. So talk, if, let's talk about the second part then. Is any, we don't have in here right now that part of this money will be used to keep your water rates from going up. Should we add that? And that's a call, and that's a call for how you policymakers are going to spend the money.
I believe we should. I mean, we're talking right now that, that we could end up increasing you annually for the next nine years at five percent. We should say this will help us not having to do that. This, we're looking for other ways to pay for this and having people visiting our town help us pay for that, um, as opposed to everything being on the shoulders of our homeowners and businesses.
I'm with Paula. I think the way that that is, is, you know, just a wording and a justification, kind of explaining our why is so important.
Shelley, you have your hand up. So I, I think for this, let's everybody just take down our hands, unmute ourselves and just jump in when we can, because if, if Shelley's waiting patiently and everybody's jumping in, that's not real fair. So I'm okay with everybody just jumping in, because there's only five of us right now.
Okay. Okay, that's fine. I was just going to speak to the question that Keith just asked, and I apologize for being late, but glad I can be part of this conversation. I, I guess, I, I kind of agree with some of Paula's sentiments. I, I have questions in my mind. A, is the point seven five too much? I, I remember a conversation about, uh, repealing the, the current street tax, which is a half cent, and replacing it with a full cent, you know, focused on streets and infrastructure. Whether or not the timing is right to do that now, so soon after trying the streets vote a couple, just two years ago, or whether we wait till it's closer to the sunset of that street tax? That's, that's an important question to me, and I don't know the answer to that. But I do think Paula is, is, um, kind of hitting the nail on the head, saying we did just increase the water rate substantially. And so now to come with another tax that is quite high, that point seven five, is, uh, I, I, I would have a hard time thinking that the voters, our voters would support that. And, and I guess I'd want to understand a very good explanation of why they would do that. And I certainly think keeping the water rates lower going forward maybe have to be part of that conversation. So that would be a question we would want to delve into. And, and other rates possibly too, other, other infrastructure and utility, utility type rates, wastewater and water and electric.
So I think, I think, go ahead, Charlie.
I was gonna say, I don't remember being at that first meeting, and I, just because my schedule's been so erratic lately, I'm not sure I was or was not. I may have been, I just don't remember it, but um, I don't remember the discussion about repeal and replace. So maybe it might be more productive for Keith if we kind of tell him from each of our point of view, what information we're trying to get from the voters right now, and see if there's a way to, sorry Keith to do this to you, but maybe a way to restructure this poll to make sure that, yeah, because we were trying to keep the meetings with two of us, because that way we can have conversations that weren't under cora, so very honestly, so.
No, let, let's get it right. Let's get, let's get the questionnaire the way you want it. Um, there's no doubt about that. I, you know, also, I, I cannot guess what the sentiment of your, your board is, but I'm hearing different viewpoints here. If you scroll, you scroll up in the questionnaire on the screen, um, to where the ballot questions are, that, that is, um, where we get to the three quarters cent, right? And question thirteen? And then we ask fourteen. I could easily flip those two, if, who's ever got control of the screen, scroll up to thirteen and fourteen.
That's Steve.
Steve, scroll up to questions thirteen and fourteen. Okay, that's page three. Yeah, one more. Um, I can, I can easily flip this. I can ask this, we can ask the half cent first and get a yes, no, and a half cent. Then we can go back and, and tell people that they'll be able to do more with more money. And I can, and if you give me some details of what you can buy with a half cent, what you can buy with three quarter cent, and what you buy if you repeal and replace with a half cent. And so I get, I could ask three different ballot questions with three different sets of pay fours and get a yes, no, answer on each of those, if that's what y'all want. We can do that.
So I think, at, at least from my perspective, that sounds reasonable, because I think a lot of folks like the idea of repeal and replace, because it is different than what was asked two years ago. I don't think, and, and Steve Boyd or, uh, Matt Langhorst or both can jump in, I don't think we get anything more at all with a half cent additional tax than we would repealing the existing half cent and adding an additional one cent.
Yeah, you're right. It's the same thing, isn't it?
Oh, yeah. Keith, you said repeal, replace, or the half cent, it'd be repeal, replace with either a penny or a penny and a quarter. That's the combination of the extra fifty cents.
Right, so you'd have to tell me which one of those options you'd test. I think three is all we can subject people to. It gets a little too confusing after that. So you'd tell me if you want it to be one cent repeal and replace, or one point two five repeal and replace. Then I could ask the half cent, then I can ask the three quarter. And if, and if someone could just take a look at that question thirteen um, and kind of give me some sense of, you know, if we, if we lose a, if we lose a half, a quarter penny on this, what less could we do?
Well, I think that comes back to the clarification of, we just passed that water rate increase to pay, pay for replacing deteriorating water and sewage pipes and, I think before you ask this question, or right after it or within it, we have to say that this would allow us to,
Lower water rates.
Lower water rates, because we put that into place to do exactly what we're asking here in question thirteen, except for this repaving streets. There's something in there.
That's incorrect, Paula, and I can be corrected in this, but the water rate increase was to make up for the past failure of us to, uh, include increases since two thousand fifteen and do the big projects. It was not, there's not enough money in that to do the Red Mountain and those types of things. Matt Langhorst, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's my recollection of the, the rate increase. It did not include these other streets that we talked about two years ago in that ballot question.
I would like Matt's clarification, Charlie, because that was my understanding in the whole water rates discussion, is it included replacing water and sewage pipes on infrastructure underground. That was kind of like why we were looking at a ten-year process.
So, so guys, Matt's, Matt's online and he's ready to speak to that.
Okay.
Sorry, I was in a ten Bs, not participants. So what we just passed does provide us to cover, um, expenses for operations maintenance and for a pretty extensive replacement program, whether it's water tanks themselves, water plant, um, or underground infrastructure, kind of covers the gamut. There's three different spreadsheets over the ten years that accommodate for that. I'm going to be very cautious how I say this, because we haven't studied it fully. I've asked Brian Mance over at GovRates to kind of thumbnail what this would do if you were to say that this one percent, point seven five, whatever this is, was going to help cover the thirty-six million dollars in infrastructure for water. We have to be careful, because we want to replace roads with this partially, which is a pretty good chunk. Um, and if you do one percent, and Steve can correct me, over uh, one year, that's about five million dollars, where we get about two and a half now. So over ten years, that's about fifty million dollars. You know, over our ten-year water program, it's thirty-six. That only leaves fourteen million for streets. Um, and that's kind of counterproductive a little bit. So maybe you could pay for a portion of the thirty-six million out of this. Um, and then a significant amount, whatever's left over, I guess you would call it, or the balance of it would be for streets. And we are working on that much more detailed streets list than we did last time. I felt it was fairly detailed last time, but we are working on a much more detailed street by street, area by area. Here's the water problems, here's the sewer problems, here's the utility problems, whatever it is in that particular area, and we're going to start breaking that out. So, but I guess my point is, is that the water program's a ten-year program to cover thirty-six million dollars of infrastructure capital projects and operations and maintenance. So you can't strip thirty-six out of the fifty, if you were to ask.
I wasn't thinking of stripping thirty-six out of it, because we already did incur a thirty-nine plus percent increase, so that should get us jumped way ahead. I'm just saying it should hopefully catch, keep us from doing a five percent increase annually and maybe lower that to some degree. That's my point, was that instead of five percent every year, maybe we could do one to two percent and still keep caught up on some of those projects. Would that make sense?
What I think Brian was going to suggest, and he needs to look at in more detail if this is the direction we want to go. I just need to know which direction you all want to go before I, I let Brian lose, because he, he costs money. But basically, he was saying that if we could cover the thirty-six million, which is unrealistic, if we could cover all thirty-six million of it, you know, you would leave the thirty-six percent increase that we have, you wouldn't increase rates for four to five years, depending on how much you cover. And then thereafter, the five percent would go to around two and a half or three percent. So it would be a savings, because we'd be about ten percent ahead with the thirty-six percent right now. So in the next few years, you would just let that float, because we need the money to pay for the capital and be able to pay for, um, loans and things upfront. But you might be able to scrounge in the next four or so years down to nothing, and then reduce the remainder of the ten years down to a, not a five percent. He kind of threw out two and a half or three percent.
Well, and there's a lot of ways to skin this cat, I think, you know, and, and we do, it's, it's tough to get into it now, because we, we could, it's a lot of philosophical stuff that maybe we can't get on the, uh, the, the poll. But we could also repeal ten percent of the recently replaced one and bring it down for the next five years to three percent, or so, something like that. You know, we can, we can push and pull different level, levers. No, we cannot. We cannot do anything with the thirty-six percent we just passed. No.
We are borrowing money against that thirty-six percent for wastewater facility improvements as we sit right now. CWCB loans, um, the wastewater plant loan is still out there at twenty-one million dollars for the next twelve years. So you have to have debt coverage. And we don't have debt coverage right now, but with the thirty-six percent, we do have debt coverage to borrow these dollar amounts at extremely low interest rates, which we're probably not going to see again. So we need, we're borrowing that money basically now to cover all of these expenses. So we have to carry a debt coverage amount, which is basically why he went up to the thirty-six percent.
But if we do pass a point, if we were to pass a three quarter cent sales tax increase, that would also provide for that as well.
You would have to write that very, very carefully. Because the water fund is an enterprise fund, so how would a bank look at a sales tax covering an enterprise fund? I don't, I don't know the answer to that. Maybe Steve does. For debt coverage.
Yeah, well, I think for the purpose, for the purpose of this, let's, let's talk, maybe focus on a question about, I think it is valuable, and I'm hearing a support of some kind of question to some point, saying that if we were to pass, and i- i- if it's three quarters, I mean, that's the thing, I think that's why it's three quarters, Paula, versus a half cent. I mean, three quarters is rear its head again. Because now it's two and a half years later, things cost a lot more, and that's actually what it takes now to do similar things that maybe five eights would have done two and a half years ago. And so I think if we want to put a question on there of, are you more likely to vote for, and Keith, I'm doing your job for you, so jump in at some point, but.
I can write, I can write the question, and I know what you want to do. It, part of the money will be used, yeah, part of the money will be used to mitigate the wastewater uh, water, water rate increase, and the burden, the, the pay for it will shift to non-residents.
So that, so that Keith knows, in, in two thousand and five, the question was asked to go from a quarter percent to a half percent. So if you look at the resolution, which I'm actually staring at right now, it's two thousand five, it's sixteen, you know, there was originally a street tax. It was called something very long. But they went from a quarter cent to a half a cent. And if you think about it, we're almost twenty years later to, in, in a five percent increase every year in this valley, that's basically over those twenty years, it's a hundred percent increase in what we have to spend to keep up. So it makes sense to me, and I know about you, Keith, you're the guy that knows how to do things, that it makes sense that after about twenty years, we need to raise that from a half a cent to one cent to keep covering those same costs and add in a few of these additional water ones, because originally it wasn't an infrastructure type tax.
So maybe to focus on what Keith needs, Paul, I think that maybe this gets to what you were talking about. Keith, the question would be, if we did three quarters, so we might, we might be able to decrease the water rates or not increase them more, not decrease, but decrease them more. But if we don't get that three quarter cent, we probably wouldn't be able to do it, because we need that full half cent just to do the streets. Does that, am I saying that right, or?
If that's the group's understanding and the consensus, I can write it that way.
I didn't quite get it, Charlie, sorry. That, so I kind of like where Keith was going before, where first we asked about the half cent, and then we moved to the three quarter cent, um, as a different option, including, you know, what that, what that difference in the tax would be, but I think, um, you know, I, I totally understand what you're saying, Matt, that times change and things cost more, but everything costs more, and we're talking about our citizens here. And, and we put a burden on them this year. And then we're going to go back to them in November and say, you know, okay, would you also vote for a tax increase now that you've got this? And, and you really have to weigh that on how that's going to be, um, embraced by the community, which I don't think it's going to be embraced. So we definitely need this. We need to, you know, take care of stuff, but we also need to go, this, this is how it will help you. And, and I understand what you're saying about, you know, we, you know, we incurred this debt, we've got to pay. There's a way that this will help them in the future, um, at least from my perspective, to say, that will make a difference to you.
You may want to cut your video, because, yeah, you're seeing, you might want to cut your video.
Gone. Let me try this again.
I'll be so happy we're done with these meetings.
July, here we come.
So, Paula, if you, if you'll take a break for a second, um, whether technologically or whatever, Ingrid has her hand up. I'd love to hear from her.
I did. I hadn't really said much so far, and I appreciate just the, the thoughtfulness and just trying to decide what is the best direction. Two things that I wanted to address before we run out of time is that when it comes to page five, and it says, lastly, some statements from supporters, I feel that that is, that fully qualifies as like push-pull business, and, and I don't want the tone of this to be a push-pull. Um, I'm fine with having a statement that says, that says like, supporters of this believe X, Y, and Z, but not, will you answer this? I also think it adds redundancy and timeliness to the survey, which I the survey, which I feel like people don't really want to fill out anyway. So if we could maybe just have something that says supporters believe this and, and those in opposition of it believe this. I like, I like seeing both perspectives. I, I know what the goal is here. It's not lost on me, but I honestly feel like transparency and equality is what we're also going for and trying to understand what the constituents feel. So that's one, just that's more feedback than anything. And then I also am curious if we could give some clarification on how we're going to ascertain, you know, the completion of these, like, is it only phone calls? Can we do? Really, I have apprehension that it would only be phone calls because I know what different demographics do for phone calls. And there's a big sector, if you're not texting them or Snapchatting with them, they're not going to fill things out. So my concern is it'll just be very heavy on certain age demographics. So I'll just stop there and let you speak to those.
No, it's a, this is a hybrid interview method. First, we're going to, we're going to give everybody with a cell phone on the voter list a cell text inviting them to take the survey. And the format that you see here is the format they'll see on their screen. So we'll get as many as possible that way. And then we'll remove the people that are the completes. And then we will call landlines and cell phones as a follow-up and do live caller interviews on this. So it is a hybrid of cell, of texting and telephone interviewing.
And then if you're not successful getting ahold of them on the phone, does that disqualify their, their survey results?
We're gonna, we're gonna prob, we're gonna do two rounds. We'll do a round of cell texts, then a round of calls, then a round of cell texts, then a round of calls.
And if, at that point, you're unsuccessful, I guess my concern is that at some point you will probably be unsuccessful at reaching a certain group of people. People that are working multiple jobs in our valley, people that have kids, people, you know, just busy people don't always have time to. And I just want it to be a disproportionate balance of information and data that we pull.
Well, there's nothing I can do in my business about people that just won't talk to me. I, I encourage, I encourage everyone on this call, everyone in the community, any stakeholders to put out the word that you should take this poll and do it any way you can. But what I do, when the data, when we get the data back, we have certain variables we know that apply to the electorate in Glenwood Springs. Party identification, gender, age being the dominant ones. I will make sure that what I report to you as data, it fits a model based on what the electorate actually looks like. So that's how I, that's how it works in my business of compensating for the people that won't talk to us.
Yeah. And I mean, ultimately, I think that is just the reality of it. Those who step up, you know, I think there's that saying, the world is run by those who show up. There's also the world hears the feedback from those who answer. So I have to roll with that.
I will, I, and I will change the introduction to that section where we're asking about the messages. But, you know, we, we have to really get at, if, if we want to try to change the outcome from what happened last time people took the vote, we really have to look at asking all the questions related to need, including the new one now about alleviating water rate increases. And, and we have to, I have to do those in breaking them out into individual components because we want to see against their responses elsewhere in the poll, especially if they shift their vote from the beginning to the end after hearing these things. What is, what is it that people moves them the most to want to be positive about this? And in terms of balance, you have the, have the question 13, mine just went away for some reason. After 13, maybe it's 15. And I'm sure you saw that, which is the, and there it is. Question 15, which is the pretty brutal statement from opponents to the sales tax increase. And it includes a lot of things, like among the highest sales tax in the state just rose water rates. You know, we already, we already have a tax to fix bridges and streets. Taxes are high enough. And then we, I added an open end after that to see which factor either those or anything else bothers them the most. So we're giving people a lot of balance in this poll, I believe. And so it's not a push-pull. And I know it may seem like that at the end, but it's, it's really a message test poll, not a, not a push-pull. And the fact that we have balance from both sides is, is what, is what keeps it from being a push-pull.
And then I, my feedback is that it's a disproportionate balance from one side to another. And that my goal in information gathering, what I'm hearing you say is your goal is a different outcome from an election.
Yes. Okay.
And I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Is to get real-time feedback from our community. So, and so my feedback there is to say that if we could say proponents believe this, or this is, you know, their perspective, and those in opposition believe this. So I'll put it out there and maybe there's feedback. Members.
Well, the only problem with doing it is, I'm sorry.
Charlie?
I was gonna, but maybe I'm wrong, Ingrid and Keith, you can comment on this, but I think we're getting that, the feedback in the first 14, I don't remember how many questions. The first 16 questions, you're getting that feedback. And then the rest of it is, okay, if, if council decides they're going to go forward, which of these messages are going to make a difference and, and whether you vote for it or don't vote for it. So we understand the quote-unquote marketing of the, of the validation. And I don't think it's a push-pull. I, I have seen push-pulls. But maybe, maybe we're not getting that information, the first 16 questions. I thought we were, my read.
Well, Ingrid is, I'm guilty as charged. I get hired, I get hired to help communities communicate best with their voters to pass infrastructure ballot test issues, whether it's for schools, roads, you know, playgrounds, parks, whatever, libraries. That's what I do. So I have, I'm guilty as charged. Yes. I, I come into this with, with the bias that if the voters were fully informed and knew everything that the people here know, then how will they vote? Because I got to believe I wouldn't even be on this call right now if you didn't have this significant and serious need to ask the voters for a significant tax increase. So I'm guilty as charged.
We got to move it on. We're already over time, but this is, this is, hold on, this is really important. So I just want to say for our financial advisory board, if you guys can just hold on with us, we got some more questions, more feedback. I think this is important enough that, that we need to get through this. So I don't want people to rush through. I just want to give everybody enough time. Matt Lohrhears has his hand up. Go ahead, Matt. Sorry, Ingrid. Are you okay for right now? Okay.
Mine's just piece of information for Keith. The, the current tax runs out on December 31st, 2026.
Go ahead, Shelley.
I believe.
Okay. And I, I appreciate all of this conversation. I think what I'm most interested in finding out, which it looks like we will learn from this survey is, you know, what's the appetite for voters to go for a tax on this that we did try two years ago? I feel like it's going to be difficult coming out of the pandemic with the inflation on pricing and things that we're seeing right now. I think people are being hit with, with a lot right now. So this, this will be a tough ask. And I just want to throw out there, we've had conversations about other tax issues for all of the needs that we have. And we've talked about an attractions tax. We've talked about possibly raising the lodging tax or anything like that. Are there, do we want to open up the survey to other options to just raising the sales tax? And, and, and I guess I, I put that out there because it, from the people that I talked to, I feel like there might be more appetite for, for putting a specific tax or a fee on, on more our visitors that are, you know, coming to town and impacting. I don't know if that's too much to, to put something in there to get, to gauge appetite on that, but that's it.
You know, and I'll just say, Shelley, I think one of the things that, you know, Keith, I think you did the survey for the fire question in 2018. I think one of the things that we did ourselves and the community disservice was we threw in partly because I wanted to include it, like three questions at the end of that fire survey, because we had to pass in 2018 that fire renewal. Or else our fire department would run out of money. And so I was like, hey, can we throw out a couple of questions about half cent, 3/4 cent? And they both polled incredibly well. Now, there wasn't context. There wasn't, how does this message test, you know, the message testing at the end? And so we got these numbers. They're like, yeah, sure, of course. Why wouldn't we go for it? So based on that, we didn't go for it in November. We went for it the following in April. But we didn't have complete information. So my fear would be that we throw a couple of questions about affordable housing or some other things we really want to know about. But we don't get the information we really need because there's not the context or the intentionality behind it. And we also dilute the intentionality of, of this. So that just from the experience we had last time, I'm sensitive to that, but I'll let Keith talk about that because that's not me.
No, I, yeah, I, I agree, Charlie. You're right. Yeah. And plus, we, we have a certain time limit with the respondents that if we go over it, we'll never get enough participation. So right now, we're really at that time limit. So adding more complexity and more issues would, would probably, would defeat the purpose here. It'd be difficult to do.
Go ahead, Paula.
Um, yeah, a couple of things. One, I kind of had the same sense that, of, I'm agreeing with Ingrid basically. I just kind of felt like I was being pushed into a direction with some of the way the questioning at the end was. And especially when you look back at question 15, it says opponents to this sales tax. And then it lists a bunch in one paragraph. So they're not really addressing each thing item by item. And then we get this long list of proponents or supporters of it and what, what are some of the reasons? Is, there's just a different way to be wording that and to show a little balance there. As Ingrid said, I would love to see that, Keith. And I know that's a difficult thing and throwing in the water rate thing on top of that might make a difference, but I did kind of have that same sense that Ingrid did. So the other thing I, I was not sure about, and this is really simple, is why are we asking their, how they're registered to vote? I'm afraid that might turn people off right at the beginning.
Right. Okay. This, this topic has come up a lot. First of all, we, we work off a voter list. Voter lists have phone numbers attached to them. Sometimes they're phone numbers that the people themselves give. Sometimes they give accurate ones. Sometimes they give inaccurate ones to people. We all, these, these voter lists are also commercial voter lists. So they, they go out and they match them as best they can based on commercial availability of phone numbers. You give your phone number to Amazon. Okay. We don't always know that, and then people live in households with other people. So landlines are kind of a mess too. We don't always know that the person who we are, who phone number we think is attached. And with a landline, we have no idea who it's attached to. That that's the person that's on the voter list. So we just ask them, what are you registered as? Because I need to know for every individual in my poll sample, what's their party registration? So that when I look at the overall party registration of the voters of Glenwood Springs, I make sure that my sample matches up to what the real, reality is. That's the best way to know that I'm giving you accurate data. Now, if you don't care about accurate data, I won't ask the question. But it's not going to get you any more responses. And in fact, and in fact, what we've found is it gets, it teaches people that this is legitimate and this isn't some guy trying to sell me, you know, auto insurance.
Does it make a difference that it's at the beginning or the end? And I have worked on ban lists, so I know similarly what you're talking about.
Yeah, it, it does. Because if, you know, if, and, and again, I don't know who's answering the phone. If, you know, a 13-year-old kid is answering mom's phone, I don't want to interview them. You know, so there, you know, whatever. That, no, I, I need, I ask it upfront. It works. It's worked for us. So I want to keep it.
Okay.
I, I do have two questions. I have a question about the, about the repeal and replace. And I'm not a lawyer. But if you do a ballot issue, does it have to be two separate questions? Could you, do you have to put repeal as a yes, no? And then a penny as a yes, no? Or can you wrap it into one question? Because if you have to do it at two, you're taking a hell of a risk, folks.
No. Carl, Carl can jump in, but I, you have to ask it as two, but the second one would have, would be if this, if this, then that. If this one passes, then, go ahead, Carl. You say it.
On the if, the if then in terms of the ballot language, if this passes, then there will be a repeal of X. Is that what you're looking for? Yeah. I mean, it's just, it's pretty straightforward language. We did it. I think the fire tax question actually was framed that way.
Okay. So you're not really running the risk that people vote to get rid of one tax, but don't replace it?
No, no, no. It's always, it's always.
Okay. And my second question is on repeal and replace. This one was going to go away in December of 2020, 25, 26. If they vote yes on repeal and replace, will it stay, will that, will that part of it stay in forever?
If there's no sunset.
Yeah. As long as you don't ask the sun. I mean, you can, you know, the question really becomes if, you know, shall the taxes be raised X, you know, X amount, you know, for a period of 20 years or shall be raised X amount, right? Like that's really kind of, it's how you frame up that question.
And I would say, Keith, and maybe this is, maybe you have a different idea of getting at the water deal, but if we increase, I think the difference generally, you know, at least for the poll question, you know, maybe not legally or financially, but a half cent probably gets us our streets reconstructed. 3/4 cents gets us that and the utilities underneath it, which will help the water rate increases in the future. And so, you know, maybe on, you know, those three questions, 13 through 15, you, you ask the question, what else do you get going from a half cent to 3/4? I think it's a, a simple way would be you also get lower, significantly lower water rate increases into the future because you also get the efficiencies and the scalability of replacing your utilities while you do the streets. Is that, is that? I'm not going to ask council because everybody's going to say, oh, no, there's, but is Matt Langhors, is that too simple of a way to phrase it, at least for just a poll?
There is some form of truth in that, yes. Okay. It has to be studied to see how much that really is. Deborah's got something to say.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, is that actually quantifiable? But you just said like we would need to do some work to quantify it.
We need to do work that if, whether we go for a half cent, it brings up to one, or we do a 3/4, that brings up to one and a quarter, makes a difference in the conversation. Because then how much are we spending on streets? What's left over for utility work? How much does that knock into the $36 million? How much does that spread across the, the whole entire program? I mean, it's, it's one question, but it's a very complicated answer depending on which direction we go.
Right. There's also the option that you just do less of the city. That part of the city gets fully rebuilt and part of it doesn't get touched at all. Between a half and a 3/4.
Well, but our utilities, if we're going to redo utilities, that, I mean, one, how do you pick winners and losers? And if we do, it's Charlie's neighborhood. I'm sorry, Charlie. But, but you know, utilities are system-wide. You know, we can't have one neighborhood be fantastic and brand-new pipes, another one have clay sewer pipes. I mean, I think we need to be equitable in anything we do. I just, to me, that's just a non-starter.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't break out that way. The streets and the, the utilities kind of chase each other all over town. So I can't fix one without the other kind of thing.
Right. So, so I'm, I'm sorry, but, and I realize the, the desire to try to lessen the tax burden on, on the taxpayers to go for a half rather than 3/4. But if you do end up with a half and that's, that's what's passable and that's what's palatable, you, how, how do you do this thing with the pipes underneath the streets that all need to be redone and the streets up here that need to be redone? And if you only got a half cent, how do you then do the pipes without part of the streets?
You, you don't. That's why we just increased water rates to catch back up from where we were lacking and then to be able to fund a capital program to fix the piping, keep up plant maintenance, add water tanks as needed, blah, blah, blah. And then the street tax that exists kind of chases the water department around town a little bit. Because we have to, the water department can't pay for an entire subdivision rebuild when all they really need is a four-foot wide trench to replace a piece of pipe. You know, so they kind of correlate together. That's why one was just passed, increased. We can get all this, this money to put into water. And the other one is we just have half a cent right now, which is about, you know, I think it's like 1.8 to 1.9 million of that gets chased around a street and the rest of it's maintenance, which was built into this tax discussion originally.
I got it.
So now we have too much money and we have enough money in the water department to fix things, but we'll be chasing slowly with the streets because we don't have as much money to chase and fix all the streets at the same time kind of thing. So it's.
And if, and if you go for 3/4 as a, as a resident, you get to shift some of the burden for paying for the water to the non-residents.
And that was the original point that I think, that we were trying to make with the original street taxes. Help, let people outside of the city help pay for their burden on the infrastructure.
Okay. Okay.
We'll just put it all on second homeowner, Shelley. Sorry.
Community displacement fee. That's the euphemism.
Sorry. I'm going to be myself.
It's a fee, not a tax. Question, Keith, let's see, and this is just pedantic a bit. Number 20, no, I'm sorry, 21, this infrastructure package will include new and upgraded recreation trails in the city. Can you just strike the last three words?
Sure. I have no trouble with that. Sorry.
Nope, it's good. Just, there's a lot of our trails, you know, branch outside and, and end up in, in different parts.
Yeah, I did, I just thought the city government can only do things in the city, but if you got, y'all have power above and beyond limits, great.
Oh, Deborah, Steve, Yvette, go ahead. Sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that the Sursa trading starts at 4:15 and you still have a Fab.
All right, I'll leave.
But that's great.
Great. Thank you, Keith.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys. Fab, thank you very much for your patience. Sorry, and Sursa, probably you're going to have a little patience, too. I'm going to start promoting, I'm just going to roll right into it. Folks that I see from Fab, somebody's helping me here. Thank you. Is there anybody else that needs to be promoted? No? Okay. Hi, Christian.
Honorable mayor, nice to see you. I'm glad you're running on schedule.
I did for you. But the floor is yours, sir.
I could probably kick this off if you guys want. Our chair of financial advisory board is Kasana, and she, I think, is going to speak to the couple of things that we needed to bounce off of council. One is our annual Fab grant recommendation. The other one is the budget letter or memo that Fab writes every year. So if it's okay with you, Kasana, maybe I'll just kind of hand it over to you. And I don't know if you want to share a screen or anything. I'm happy to share mine if you'd like, if you need me to, but I'll just kind of turn it over to you.
Yeah, I'm having some technical difficulties this afternoon, so if you want to share yours, that would be great.
Yep, give me just a minute here. Do you want the Fab grant list up?
Yeah, that would be good. And I know you guys all have this information in your packet already, so I'm not going to go through everything in great detail. We did have about 173,000 in grant requests this year. And we recommend approval of 155,300. So that's about half of what the, the 306,000 that was available for grants. I think we recommended approving all but two of them. Those two were just because they were more capital projects, which we don't tend to approve. And then there were three that we had recommended giving a little extra to, mostly because we didn't give them anything last year. I do always like to state that I have a conflict of interest with both Mountain Valley Developmental Services and Raising a Reader. So I did not personally participate in conversations regarding either of those grants.
And thank you, Kasana, because that reminded me, I also have a conflict with Mountain Valley Developmental Services and River Bridge Regional Center. I'm on both boards.
And I have a conflict with U.S. and Middle Colorado Watershed Council, and I excused myself when those discussions came up earlier and will recuse myself from this one.
And I, I think the, the only other thing about the grant process that we did just kind of want to mention is due to the fact that we, there's still about half of the grant funds available, we would recommend that you consider having a, a second round for those who might not have applied the first time. It's been such a, a crazy year for everybody that giving people a, a larger opportunity to apply if they so choose would be our recommendation.
So I got one question. I saw Steve's email to the FAB and, and being the council we use on. And that was adding to, I believe it's a summer music that said $2,500. In, is, can you speak as whether the FAB would support just adding that here rather than having it separate?
So I.
To make sense.
I, I, that wasn't something that we had discussed at the time. I don't think that we would have any issue with doing that. If anyone else on the board wants to weigh in, I, I, that makes sense to me.
And for those who may not have seen that email, that the issue is, is the summer music asked the, or maybe asked the council to waive the park fees in Democratic Vethus Rock or somebody else. And the idea was to make a part of the grant program because that way the money for those fees will still flow through to the Parks Department, which needs that money to facilitate that summer music program.
Yep, I, I had the same thought, Charlie. If we could just add that into this round, just add it to the summer of music. Yeah.
It looks like I have a. Is Annie Olson, is she a Fab member?
Oh, I know.
Yeah, she's the one with the summer of music.
Yeah, Annie, go ahead. I'm going to promote you to panel so you can speak. And go ahead, Annie. Just unmute yourself. Jump in there.
I'm here.
Hi.
Hi, guys. So what questions do you have? I also have my vice president, who's the, our treasurer. He's also here as well, David Reynolds. Did you guys have a question for me?
No, we were suggesting, Annie, that Steve had recommended, Steve Boyter, our CEO, CEO, oh, yeah, I think that's right, recommended we just add that to your grant request, give you 6,500, and then have you pay the park fees. Do you have any problem with that?
No, you're going to give a 6,500 and we pay for the park fee?
Correct.
I'm, I'm definitely okay with that. That would certainly help us out.
Okay.
It was 6,500, right? 64,000 plus the 2,500?
Yes. Can you say that amount again, please?
Right now, the request is 4,000, Annie, and the suggestion is, is to agree that, that the $6,500, which includes the $2,500 park fees.
Thank you so much. Yes, I appreciate that.
Okay.
I had a question for the board, for the Fab board on just the, the two grants that are in the red that were not funded, that K D and K, Community Radio and Eagle Valley Land Trust. Can you guys just speak to those a little bit, please?
Yes, both of those were requests for projects that were more in capital in nature. And generally, the, the city has funded operating rather than capital requests.
Okay, great. I just wasn't sure if it was because they're out of town or, or what they were doing, but.
Eagle Valley wanted to tear down an old dock and build a new one with that $20,000.
Okay.
K D and K wanted to increase their broadcasting with their request.
Okay, thanks.
And could you speak, there's three applications. It looks like you gave them more money than they actually requested. Could you talk a little bit about a way out, junior achievement and raising a reader, and why they received more than they had asked for?
Did, did you want to speak to that, Monroe?
I'm sure those were three that we looked at who had similar requests last year and they got nothing. And we felt that those three maybe could use a little extra. I don't know if that's something we can do. Maybe you can't even do that legally. Who knows? Give them more than they ask. But that was our thinking because they got nothing last year.
Well, a lot of them got nothing last year. I'm just curious on why, of all the ones that got nothing last year, were these three more worthy of getting like a makeup grant? And the other ones weren't?
Well, the other ones were asking for a lot more this year and sort of getting their own makeup. It seemed like those three were sort of falling behind. We chose to, to push them forward a bit.
Okay, I, I appreciate that, and I, I don't have a problem on that. I kind of appreciate the board's discretion on that.
And, and I don't have the applications in the packet. And if we can upload those potentially, or at least have a link to, to access that, that'd be great before tonight. But could you speak a little bit about the $30,000 Catholic Charities grants? I mean, that is by far the largest grant requested and awarded. And I believe Catholic charities were funded fully last year as part of the COVID, like, essential service. So as one that was fully funded last year, why are we tripling their receipt?
Steve, do you have a spreadsheet that shows previous years?
And I, I think that given that the requests that were submitted were significantly less than the, the dollars available, we, we didn't really decrease if, if we thought they were worth funding, we didn't look at, is it, should we give them the total amount or should we give them less?
So if they would have come in at 80,000 and we had the money, we would have given them maybe?
Interesting question.
Yeah, I guess I'm just looking for like the discernment of like, you know, just because they asked for it, was it worthy and is a good use of our taxpayer resources?
And I can't remember, but I think they've asked for 30,000 in previous years and gotten it. I think that is their standard ask. That's why I was wanting to, Steve had the spreadsheet that shows previous years because I can't remember right now. Is Steve out there?
I'm on a conference TV right now, so I've got to find this in my regular computer and forward it to myself, but give me a second, and I think I can get there.
Jonathan, a short answer is in 2020, council approved 12,500 to Catholic charities. I don't know what their ask was, but that was what council approved.
Well, it looks like their ask was 20,000 in 2020.
And that's what I was going to say. I remember from previous years that they were in the 20 to $25,000 range. So it seems reasonable that they have more need at this time, but.
And does anybody actually have their application so they can tell me what it's about?
Steve?
Yeah, I'm going to have to log off the call, guys, and get on my regular computer, and then I'll be back.
And, and just Jonathan, I'm curious, why you're more curious about Catholic charities?
Uh, I'm just curious because it's so dramatically higher than what we've always given them by almost three, you know, two and a half times. It makes up 20% of our entire gifting of 150, not gifting, excuse me, of our allocation. So it's just, it's just huge. It's a huge chunk of our total allocation to the entire community. It's, it's significantly higher than we've ever given them before. And I'm just wondering, I don't even know what it goes for. It's a religious institution using taxpayer money, and we do have some concerns that this council has expressed about what specifically like Feed My Sheep or Catholic Charity and, and where those dollars go for and, and who do they support? And does that contribute to some of the, the transience in, in the community? So for all those reasons, I'm, I'm curious. And I don't have, I don't have anything on any of them, actually, so.
Yeah, and, and maybe I should ask too, because I think that that's a really legit question. In, in future, is it possible to include applications in the council packet? And even if, I mean, obviously, it, it adds a lot of girth to that, but it gives us an opportunity to review it if we want to.
I think we typically have. I think this was just an oversight.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So I, I think that I shared that application. I don't.
Somebody make that bigger for us. All people can't read that small print.
You know, it, it's okay because I, I would like to actually read it. This is, if I remember correctly, it's like a hundred-page application because they don't actually have any financials that they're able to give us because they just use the Archdiocese of Denver and, and categorize everything under that. So it's, you know, if we want to read everything about the Archdiocese of Denver, this is a, a great application, but that, that's my recall as well. I'm sorry, it's only 64 pages. It might be better if it's just emailed to us.
I did find the spreadsheet. They were asking for 20 the past two years, and we gave them 12 and a half both years.
I will send you guys a link with them all.
Thanks. Other questions?
Is there any thought about giving somebody more than they ask? I mean, can we even do that?
I mean, my personal thought is, where do you start and where do you stop? And, and why only 3,000? Why not 5,000? Why not 1,000? Like, it feels so arbitrary to give somebody more than they wanted when they have a specified need that they asked something for. And we just are throwing airplane money at them. But that's just my opinion, though.
And, and I would say that I'm in agreement as well. I mean, ultimately, we check a box on every single application that says if we have more to give, would we give it? And I'm guessing almost every one of the applicants would check that box. Please give us more if you have more. So I think that keeping it to the requested amount is just kind of a checks and balance protocol.
I guess if they want to, if we're going to do a second round, they could reapply for more. That might be a way to do it.
Well, and these are all, go, I'm sorry, go ahead, Deborah.
I just wanted to explain it because it was actually my idea to put into this the request to waive, I think, you're talking about summer music?
No.
Okay, sorry, forget it. I said nothing.
Okay, filling in for Jonathan, not knowing what's going on, is Deborah tonight. She was over on the attendee, so I just promoted her. So, you know, I'd also say that we've done this before. We've had money left over, and we usually roll it into the next year. That we could do a second round, but we also do throughout the year get hit up with special things. Charlie's, not anymore because Charlie's not a part of it, but it used to always be Charlie would come to us in the fall after everything and say, hey, I need five grand to get my kids to New York because I have such a great mock trial team. Now that he's not the coach, we probably won't get those requests anymore, but.
Oh, in the Nationals in the spring, not, not in the fall.
Oh, sorry, excuse me, excuse me. But we will get a chunk of those. And, and whether they're 100,000 or, or 50,000, I don't know. But I think, you know, the next three or four months is going to be instrumental to us seeing like, wow, do we want to do a second round of that? And if we do, maybe we do address some of these or encourage other folks to do it. Or we roll it over to next year and then possibly encourage folks to be a little bit more aggressive in their ask. I think there's a lot of different ways we could do it, but it's less arbitrary. Go ahead, Charlie.
Yeah, I think that, you know, we, we, you know, in my time in the FAB as a citizen, and then as constantly is, one of the reasons we went to it one time, and we talked about it earlier this year, you, you, you either ask or you've got to wait till the next year. I don't want to encourage late applications, that we are going to get emergencies, you know? Hopefully, my trial will need it again next spring because I go to Nationals next year. But, you know, that's the kind of stuff that we ought to be willing to deal with. But generally speaking, I don't want to say, yeah, let's do a second round right now. If we find out there's a lot of people coming to us and saying, we want this, then maybe we have a second round. But most anybody. But most anybody else wants money. We've been referred back to the FAB and say, okay, there's money left over. Do you want us to use some of that this year? And that's the way I think we're going to stay with it.
Any other questions or comments?
It's, I think it's good to roll it forward. This is actually the first year that we actually have rolled anything forward, approximately 70,000. In previous years, it was never more than 1,000 or so dollars, so we just, you know, sloughed it off. But it was nice to have a chunk roll forward and it would be good to have a bigger chunk roll forward next year.
Paul, last words.
I have a question.
Yeah, I understand what Charlie's saying, but at the same time, I just kind of, in the nonprofit world, some some people are more conscious of what they need in the winter time and sometimes it's more right in front of them in the summer. And it might not be that bad to say, you know, we have some funding in in the fall and put that out there again. So I understand what Charlie's saying is you get that, get there and get in line right at the beginning of the year. But things come up, new nonprofits, new projects, and it's nice to know there's an opportunity out there. So I don't want to shut that door completely, Charlie, but I do like at least the idea that they can still come before us and we can redirect them to Fab if something does come. And I was thinking in particular of the dental clinic that came up two years ago that was so helpful to our community. And so I just want those opportunities to be out there that people have no idea that are on the table right now or could be on the table.
That's what I said, is we we have that opportunity, but I don't want to just say, okay, in August, we're gonna propose tennis applications, do a second round of applications. I don't want to open that door. One one thing that was totally missing from the list of applicants this year was any of the sports youth teams, these sports teams. Totally missing. And I have a feeling maybe in the fall they'll reactivate and want money.
Yeah, and that might be an appropriate use, just like Summer of Music, because I know they're pretty heavily subsidized in their, like, for example, sofas, barricadas are subsidized already and their lane rental and facility rental already, just and hockey and some of those other programs as well. So, you know, it might it might make more sense allocate them money in so that they can rent the space at, you know, market rate. Maybe just make it a little cleaner accounting wise. I think if I, if we have no other questions, comments?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead, Annie.
Yeah, I just wanted to be really clear, and I I thank you for giving us money since we don't have much. But we are having one concert in August. Is everybody clear on that? We're not doing the six concerts because we, it just wasn't going to happen with the guideline restrictions and COVID. So I just want everybody to make sure that we are having one, same place, same time at Taurus Park, but it's August 4th.
So on, okay, only one. I was not aware of that. I I had, I guess, heard from the grapevine that it would be kind of the month of August.
No, when I sent in our application, you know, for the grant, we put in the exact dates, dates and times and everything in that packet, in our 37-page packet.
Yeah, and we don't, we haven't seen that today.
Okay.
So thank you, Annie, but.
I hope you guys could be there.
Just the one.
And Annie, I hope that next year you're able to come back and ask for more money, because you can do the full series, so.
Oh, I will be asking. Oh, Charlie, thank you. I will be asking like like I have every year. Thank you.
All right, folks, do we have anything else? All right. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Fab, for your work on this. It's really appreciated.
Does it, do we want to talk about a recommendation?
Yes, sorry. Yes, okay.
Didn't want to lose that. I know that we're running late, but.
Nope, nope. Thank you very much, Charlie. Appreciate it. Go ahead. Who's going to present that?
Uh, would be me. And I I think we can probably go through it pretty quickly unless there are questions. I'm I'm not going to read it all, because again, you should have it in your packet already. I think the majority of items are similar to those that we have presented to you in past years. They're, the first two are a little different due to the pandemic and the city's ability to weather it more effectively than we had thought might happen, the sales tax being higher than we were afraid it would be early on in the pandemic. But I think other than that, our recommendations are pretty consistent with what we usually recommend. We recommend keeping a healthy reserve. We recommend focusing on retaining staff and items to that effect. So like I said, I won't go through every every piece of it, but.
Read up, Steve Boyd.
Okay, sorry. It sounds like you guys are looking at my email. See if this works.
There you go. Sorry, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you. I maybe you finished, but.
Yeah. I had essentially finished, Charlie. I, like I said, if you guys have any questions, we're happy to answer them. But I think it it is overall pretty consistent with what we usually recommend.
I guess I'll just comment. I thank you for the recommendations. I know it would be considered by the council of the budget, so I appreciate it.
Are there any questions about this memo, the recommendations, or our hesitancy to either accept these recommendations? Or, I mean, I guess through the budget process, we'll endorse them. But does anybody have any clarification they need while we have the Financial Advisory Board here currently?
No, I'll just comment. I appreciate the recommendations very much. And I think we implemented quite a few of them when we did that appropriations ordinance last meeting, which we have second reading of. And some of the reserve amounts and things like that. So that was my understanding. So I appreciate the memo. Am I wrong on that? You have a questioning look on your face.
No, I'm actually, Shelley, I can confirm for you that, yeah, both in the budget that was passed last year and in the reappropriation, we were consistent with all of Fab's recommendations.
Great, great. Thanks, Steve.
And is this letter in our packet as well?
Yes.
There it is. Okay. Any other questions on this? Charlie, Shelley?
Tony? Thank you. I appreciate all the work from the board and the good recommendations. So.
Thank you, Financial Advisory Board.
Yeah, thank you guys so much, all your hard work.
Okay. All right. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. We'll now move on to a presentation by Mr. Sam Light on on elected official training.
Hey, good afternoon.
How are you doing?
Mayor, council and staff, thanks very much for having me join your meeting today. Very much appreciate it. I'm going to share my screen and go through a presentation. I believe my elected officials' training is the only thing standing between the council and a and a break before you move on to your next item on your agenda this evening. So I'll move quickly, but I do also want to make sure everyone understands that feel free to interrupt me at any time during my training if you have questions by raising your hand or dropping something in the chat and maybe staff can monitor that as well and make sure that my attention is gotten when you do have a question about my training materials. So thanks very much for the opportunity to visit with you. My name is Sam Light and I am General Counsel for SIRS, the Colorado Intergovernmental Risk Sharing Agency, which is your insurance provider. We're very proud of the fact that the city is a member of our organization. You've been with our workers' compensation program since 2004 and you're one of the charter members of our property and casualty pool. So thank you very much for your membership and we very much appreciate having Glenwood Springs as a member. And I very much have Glenwood Springs as a special place in in my heart, because that's where I started my legal career and also was lucky enough to find a bride in the Roaring Fork Valley. So sorry, not able to visit you all in in person today, but hopefully we have that opportunity in the future. So let me share my screen here and put my materials up on the screen and we'll get going. If you recall, I see some familiar faces. I think we visited about a little over two years ago where I made a presentation for council and council chambers. We'll hit on some familiar themes, but I've also changed some material and updated some as well. So feel free to ask questions if you have any for me. But we're going to talk about seven key commitments for success in public office. And I think that if we focus energy on committing ourselves to those principles, that by and large, your your risk and liability issues will take care of themselves, right? We're going to talk a little bit about a check in for everyone on the council, no matter how long you've been on council or whether you're newly elected. I think it's always good to check in on the the role of being a public official. We'll talk about transparency and some developments around the law of transparency. A couple of tips on running good meetings and dealing with meeting dynamics and perhaps issues that may bubble up unexpectedly in your meetings. I'll touch briefly on your code of ethics. You as a home rule, city have your own local code of ethics. So it's got its own unique provisions. And of course, the other benefit of being home rule and having your own ethical code is that the enforcement mechanisms for your code of ethics are local, rather than down here in front of, in Denver, in front of the Independent Ethics Commission. At least we believe that to be the case, that legal principle is still in the process of being settled right now. We'll talk about the city structure and the concept that, you know, whatever the size of the organization, there's a distinction between policy and administration and to fire on all cylinders. Everyone in the organization should respect and understand their particular role within the organization. That'll help you as a city succeed at a high level and also protect you from liability risks. And then finally, we'll talk about due process requirements, because I do know that you as a city council, once in a while, maybe every meeting have on the agenda some due process hearing that you have to attend to. So we're going to talk about a couple of tips in that area. As I say during all my trainings, this is a presentation only, though I'm services general counsel. This is not an attorney-client communication. So if you need legal advice on an issue that you have pending before you, you know, kind of a burning issue of the day or a legal issue in the here and now for which you need legal advice, you'll want to rely on Carl and your legal staff for that. And you're in good hands there. I'm happy to give some thoughts from a services risk management perspective, but it's not an attorney-client communication through this training. Okay? All right. My first commitment to suggest to you all is, again, no matter how long you've been on council, is to always remember the commitment you make when you take on the role of a public official. You're no longer just a citizen of the city of Glenwood Springs, right? You're a government official and that's a 24/7 job, right? Right? Right, Mayor? That's the call at 10:00 PM or bump into you at the city market at 7:00 AM. Hey, what's going on with the with the city, right? So the the job doesn't ask or require that elected and appointed officials give up their personal life. But it does, I I think, mean that in the eyes of the community, when your citizens, when your constituents, when applicants, whoever it may be, are dealing with you regarding matters involving the city, they are always viewing you as a government official and are always perceiving you to be a government official. And as it should, your words and your conduct have power, impact, meaning and leave perceptions as well. So that's an important aspect of recognizing the commitment to the role of a public official. Of course, when you got elected to city council, you're no longer an outsider to city government. You're now one of the ultimate insiders. And that, of course, has meaning for you and changes your role in the sense, at least among other ways, in the sense that the city has all sorts of ordinances and resolutions and policies and procedures that the council has adopted. And those all regulate the way that the council and the organization does its job for the community. And of course, those rules, policies and procedures stick to you as government officials. So it's important to commit, to recognize that insider concept. It can be very destructive or dangerous and potentially create liability risks if if elected or appointed officials taking the view that, you know, the rules don't really stick, stick to me. That's that's kind of an outsider perspective and one that can cause risk concerns. Okay? Everyone took the oath of office, right? And remember what we did there, right, is sort of pull the constitution and laws of the state of Colorado and the charter and the ordinances of the city. We'll touch base during my training about how that has meaning for you, I think, of course legally, but also ethically and morally. Kind of distilling what I see to be key components of the oath that I would commend to your attention are, I think, when you take the oath of office, you make a commitment, respect the role and responsibility that you have within the city's structure. We'll talk about how everyone within the organization has a job description and how that translates into risk. You also made a commitment to lawful conduct, including following the city's rules, procedures and criteria in decision-making. One of the key aspects of that falls right out of the US and state constitution. We all remember the due process clause that says no person shall be deprived of property without due process of law. One of your commitments in following proper rules and procedures is that you, as the council members, you have the power, which is a great thing, to make local decisions about things like land use and licensing. But with that power goes the responsibility to make sure that people are afforded their due process rights. And we'll talk about that, what that means. As elected and appointed officials and staff, we're all subject to the city's code of conduct for ethical matters. I'll touch briefly, just as a refresher on what our obligations are for conflicts of interest. That's briefly on the rules surrounding receipt of gifts and handling of confidential information. My last bullet here on this slide, maybe it doesn't fall as neatly or legalistically from the other ones, but I think perhaps it's a very important commitment that one makes in becoming an elected official. Because though we are elected to the council, we are elected as but one member of a seven-member body. But at the end of the day, the council speaks with one voice. People ask, they will ask you, what is, what is the council decision? What is council's view of this, right? So each member is a contributing part of that voice, but the council only speaks with one voice. Sometimes you're going to get there by a 4-3 vote and sometimes you're going to get there by a 7-0 vote or a head nod or whatever it may be. But I think then the way it bubbles down to a core commitment in a role of elected official is to at least approach the job with the courtesy and respect for each other's diverging opinions and styles of how people approach deliberations and debate in terms of working together towards that one voice of council. Even if we have disagreements and disagreements are natural, but we work through our disagreements towards the one voice of council. As public officials, part of your role, part of your job responsibilities, I think, is to deliver good lead, good governance, which I think both practically and legally depends upon a few core civics concepts. I've lifted, I've listed the civics concepts over here on the left-hand side of the slide. And I think that if you commit yourselves individually as council members and collectively as a council to those principles, I think by and large, the corresponding risk and claim issues, you know, that we handle on your behalf at SIRS, that by and large, those will take care of themselves. So for example, by that I mean, commit yourselves to openness and transparency and you're going to have few, if any, problems under the open meetings law or the open records law. As an example, as part of that commitment, we all recognize that as elected city council members, the emails that we send wearing our city council member hat, by and large, are public records and are potentially subject to disclosure to any person who requests them with certain exceptions. So that's sort of a fundamental piece of the commitment to the transparency is to understand that our communications might be open to view by anyone at any time with some limited exceptions. Commit yourself to fundamental fairness and you're going to have few, if any, problems or claims under the due process clause, where people are bringing a section 1983 civil rights claim for violation of procedural or substantive due process. Commit yourselves to being predictable and even-handed. You, like all of our members, have a code of ordinances or a big ordinance book. Not sure if people still keep those in hard copy format. Maybe, maybe you've got that hanging around somewhere. But those ordinance. But those ordinances set up all manner of criteria and rules and procedures around how you make decisions, including process rules and actual substantive rules about how we make a decision. And while those rules are on the books, we need to commit to enforcing them and making decisions under them in a predictable and even handed manner. And that will help protect us from claims such as equal protection claims or a claim which I got the fancy legal word here on the slide, but a sursurary claim is someone who challenges your decision because they believe it was arbitrary or capricious. And that can, a fact pattern that can suggest that is where maybe you're reinterpreting rules on the fly. You're reapplying criteria in a novel way that you've never done so before. Or you're applying criteria when there's no underlying factual support or applying the criteria that way. Finally, commit yourselves to mutuality, respect. In my time at SIRS and before that, the nearly thirty years when I was a municipal attorney, I came to the view that probably mutual respect is a pretty strong predictor of risk and risk profile around issues because we understand and we get it at SIRS that it's not an easy job. Some nights, you're going to have a super tough public hearing in front of you where you're getting five, seven, 10 different directions on what council ought to do. Hey, council do that, no, council do that. And that's again where we recognize, right? This is not a job where I always get to make a hundred percent of the people happy a hundred percent of the time. But if people walk home from that type of contentious and difficult hearing and they say to themselves, you know what? I get it. Council's got a tough job. They had to take all those diverging opinions. They had to work through all the conflicting information and they had to come up with that one decision, right? That was in the best interest of the city. And if they say to themselves, you know what, I may disagree till the end of time with the substantive decision that council made, but you know what, I feel like I was heard. I feel like it was a good process and I feel like it was respected. And you're going to be in an awesome place in terms of building trust with your constituents and your community. And my experience has been that your risk profile is going to go way down. Because we at SIRS, we think that a lot of the claims that we see actually are born with a little bit of a kernel of the other perspective on a situation where someone leaves a hearing and they say, you know what? I feel like the decision was already made before I got there. I felt like there were all sorts of weird procedural things going on. And I just felt like it was kind of a rigged process. Those are the people, right? With whom we're not building respect or trust in local government, but they're also the people who maybe start thinking about, you know, I'm so mad about that, that I'm going to look for a way to challenge the decision. And that's where claims or at least dissatisfaction with your process begins to ferment, right? All right, unless there are any questions on that, I'm going to turn the page and talk about transparency issues. Any questions? All right, transparency is not the legal word, right? But it's a buzzword, right? It's what people talk about transparency in government. It really is a basic expectation in government, particularly at the local level, because you're the most accessible form of government and you're the most accessible and approachable government officials. Your citizens do take an interest in the goings on of the city. And they appreciate and they applaud everything that you as elected officials, you as a council and you as a staff and organization do to promote transparency. From the, you know, what seem like the simplest things are applauded and appreciated by your citizens. Having a great website, you know, your room, your council chambers or your Zoom calls may not always be packed with constituents. But maybe that's because if they can check in on the website real quick, just as I was able to do last night in preparing for this, you know, look at your agendas, look at the minutes, see what council's got going on, get updates on important projects. They will appreciate that, they will applaud that, and that will build massive trust and credibility with your organization. And the flip side of that is also true. If we don't think that that principle is true, then for those organizations that get a little close to the line, a little too close to the line or step over the line, then we've found that quite often, those are the ones that begin to get pushback from transparency type watchdogs. And even though you may ultimately be right from a legal perspective, you may have persistent problems then. And ultimately, you may have claims or disputes that end up eating up time and resources. All right, I'm sure you all know this, but just a refresher. And I know we've got at least one and perhaps other fairly newer members of council. I just want to touch base again on your core obligation under the Colorado Open Meetings Law. There's a lot going on in that statute, but here I'm talking about city council as the as the group of seven council members. The open meetings law applies to all meetings of the city council and it also applies to the city's boards and commissions and so on. Basically, two principles going on in the open meetings law. The first says that whenever three or more council members meet to discuss public business, that's a meeting that has to be open to the public, which simply means a citizen has a right to observe that discussion. The second half of that rule is that if the meeting will be attended by a fourth council member or it's a meeting in which some kind of action is going to be taken, then that meeting can only be held after there's full and timely notice posted with an agenda. And of course, that's what your staff takes care of. So that's really it. You know, from your perspective, we sometimes get questions, well, if three of us meet to discuss public business, that's a meeting, I get that. But what about, what if all seven of us attend the barbecue that's hosted by one of the council members? And I don't see, I only see a couple of your faces, so I don't see a hand going up yet to see who's going to host the council barbecue this year, right? Or what if, you know, four of you
I'm not invited.
Four of you bump into each other at Sacred Grounds Coffee. Is that now a violation of the open meetings law, right? The answer to that is no, the statute expressly says that it does not apply to purely social gatherings or to chance gatherings, right? So long as, right, those gatherings do not become meetings to discuss public business. So that's the takeaway on that. Another reminder is that the statute says that a meeting for purposes of these rules includes a gathering that's in person, like you used to do and will be doing soon again in council chambers, by phone or by electronic means such as Zoom or email or other electronic means, right? Recognize that we're talking about transparency here. The open meetings law does allow you, of course, to have executive sessions, but only for a limited and small number of authorized topics and only after you as a council follow specific procedures in the open portion of the meeting before you convene to executive session. And I'm sure you work with your staff and have a good process and script for convening into an executive session. But in the second bullet here, I put a link to an article I wrote involving some litigation of valley a little bit. I'm sure it was in the local press for quite a bit there involving, there was a case involving the town of Assault that addressed the question of what exactly must the council or the council members say in open meeting before convening into open session? And the takeaways are to remember that we have to announce the subject matter of the executive session. We have to state the specific statutory citation by number, right? And then we also have to further identify the subject matter of the discussion in executive session in as much detail as possible without compromising the reason for the executive session. So if one of you as a council member said, hey, I would like, I make a motion, we go into executive session for purposes of a meeting with the town attorney pursuant to CRS 2464024B. If you stop right there, you would have a problem under the statute and the recently decided assault case. You would want to go further and say, and the discussion with the town attorney is regarding blank and whatever it may be, settlement of a pending case or legal advice involving city councils duties and obligations concerning a claim matter, whatever it may be. And that will help serve you well. Okay? The concept that the open meetings law applies to email and other electronic communications, stepping back from it all, I commend to you this kind of takeaway provision of the statute. The statute at the very front of it, not in, not in the actual rules, but in the purpose statement says that it's the policy of the state of Colorado and a matter of statewide concern that the formation of public policy is public business and may not be conducted in secret. And I find the most interesting and important word there to be formation, right? That the intent of the statute is to give your constituents a window into your policymaking deliberations. Therefore, you don't want to subscribe to a parallel process that could heighten your open meetings risks or more practical, practically leave your constituents with the view that things aren't being fully and fairly deliberated in open meetings and so forth. Okay? Continuing
This is Charlie. Can I ask a question?
Yes.
As I remember, Bill pending this year to change the rules of emails a little bit. Can you tell me, and I've lost track of that, do you know what's happened to that? And or has I changed the rule?
Yes, that's, I've got it cited right there in the middle bullet on the slide. That was House Bill 211025. So yeah, to help lay the context here, I've got a scenario on the screen here that says, what about this issue? What if there's a scenario where three members of the council have a lengthy email discussion about the merits of a policy question that's on the next agenda? There's always been this open question of, is that exchange of emails? Is that a discussion that triggers the openness requirement of the statute? And I think the answer to that is yes. But the recently adopted legislation, it'll go into effect ninety days after the legislature adjourns. It provides some clarity to this issue, really by laying out some safe harbors for elected officials in helping to confirm what types of email communications among elected officials do not trigger the openness requirement because they're not considered to be a meeting. And among those would be if it's, even if it's all seven members responding to your city manager's question, now who's available for a work session next week? You've got emails flying in seven different directions. That's not a meeting because this new legislation says that scheduling and availability emails aren't a meeting for purposes of the statute, nor are emails that simply forward information or that forward a request from a constituent or that pose a policy question, all of which are going to be discussed at a later meeting. So just sending those kinds of things would not trigger the openness requirement. On the other hand, it does also confirm what the legislator's intent was. And that is that discussion by three or more members of the merits or substance of any policy question will trigger the meeting openness requirement. They drilled down even a little further when they said merits or substance, what does that mean, right? And they said that means the essence, the essence of something. So those sound like some words that have some room for debate, right? What is the merits and substance or essence of things? But I, I hope that's helpful guidance and helps answer some questions for all of us. Okay? Reaching back to my first bullet here on executive sessions, the last practical advice I have is when you go into your executive session, of course, it's council as a body that's responsible for self policing to make sure that you stay off, stay on topic with the announced topic in your executive session, right? Sometimes I know there's a temptation that we're in here in executive session, we're for a conference with a town attorney, can we get an update on the matter subject to negotiation? Well, the answer is you could, but not in that executive session. You'd have to go back out into open session, adopt a new motion with that as the authorized topic. And then you could reconvene that way. You want to be very careful in that regard because veering off topic in executive session, the remedy for that is that the tape for the portion that you veered off topic can potentially be made publicly. And my most practical advice on executive sessions is to remember that the executive sessions are being recorded. The record, the recording is only available in litigation under very limited circumstances. But the practical takeaway is the tape is always on still during the executive session, except for attorney client communications. Okay? My last bit on electronic means is in this day and age, you know, I don't know if we're active on social media or what have you, but we get more and more questions about social media and its intersection with roles of public officials. I want to point out that in our, I'm holding up a copy of our Ethics Liability and Best Practices Handbook for elected officials in this booklet for you all. There's a chapter on social media, just kind of highlighting issues that you may face from your perspective as a public official regarding social media. A couple of tips, if you're active on social media is to the extent you can, keep your personal sites separate from your official sites. That begs the question of what is an official site? But the reason I say keep them separate is that if your site is an official site or one that walks and talks like a governmental site in terms of being a social media platform that you use for doing your job as a public official, then the law has developed to the point that I think it's pretty well understood that First Amendment principles would apply to sites that are governmental in nature, whether they be the official city sites or sites that individual elected officials use to do their job as an elected official. Also, with regard to social media, because of the heightened due process rules of engagement that you need to follow, I recommend to you that you do not engage in any social media discussions of quasi judicial matters like pending land use applications, so on and so forth. I know it can be somewhat frustrating that you might just be checking your Facebook or what have you and you see a thread on there, an excited thread about some upcoming land use matter that's high profile or controversial in the community. And it even looks like that thread includes some incorrect information or disinformation. But because of your, the limits you have under the due process obligations to not get involved in conversations outside the hearing, you want to stay away from engaging in that sort of social media discussion of pending quasi judicial matters. That scenario begs the question of what if the information is so inaccurate, whether it's quasi judicial or something else about the city? What if what's occurring on social media is so inaccurate that we feel there's some need to correct the disinformation? Or what if that social media thread is going so far off the rails that it appears, right, to be making threats against city officials or a city staff, right? And in that regard, I just want to put out there the suggestion that make sure we have a system and process for thinking very critically and deliberately about how we want to address, if at all, disinformation, right? And if the threat is in fact what our Supreme Court calls a true threat, then I would suggest to you, you have the assistance of law enforcement in determining how you want to handle a true threat that may be popping up in a social media feed. Okay? So unless there are questions, that I'll leave those two concepts there. Of course, the state campaign practices laws require that you not use city resources or similar for campaign activities. So as an elected official, from your perspective, you want to make sure you set up separate personal sites or issue committee sites or campaign sites separate from any city resources to do any campaign activities. And then if, a lot of our members, we have, we have 282 members at SIRS, consisting of cities and towns and affiliated entities. I'm pretty certain almost all of them in their personnel handbooks for their employees by this time have something talking about use of social media for their employees. The overwhelming majority at least do. But I don't see it that often that elected officials have thought about and whether they need a social media policy for themselves. I think there's more of that going on, but I do suggest that the organization look at a social media policy. It's got to be different for people with different roles within the organization, but that you consider adopting a social media policy as well. Okay? My last suggestion about transparency is actually the flip side of that. Been talking about how you are required to do most of your job in a public setting and public meetings. But there is, of course, situations where confidentiality is not only permissible under the law and defensible. It may be in the best interest of the city or the council. And to emphasize some points as takeaways here, I want to go through the scenario quickly. Let's say you've gone into executive session, had a proper motion and all that. And it's for the purpose of determining a matter subject to negotiation, which you're allowed to do. And in that, you're going to negotiate the purchase of some water rights. You've got the water engineer in the executive session and he says the water rights are worth between 30,000 and 40,000 per acre foot and the instruction given in the executive session, which is allowed, instruction is different from a decision. You instruct that the city manager meet with the water rights owner and negotiate for a deal of up to $30,000 per acre foot. The next day, kind of eager to get things going or maybe upset about what happened. One of the council members sees the landowner the next day, the water rights owner the next day and says, hey, you know, we kind of talked about your water rights last night in executive session and the city's willing to pay you $30,000 and I actually think we might go as high as $40,000. Do we have problems there, right? Yeah, the takeaway here is people sometimes call, one of the services we provide our members is a liability hotline that I staff. And once in a while, members will call me and say, hey, we had some leakage from our executive session. And once in a while, members will call me and say, hey, we, we had some leakage from our executive session. What's the remedy? And I said, well, let's break that down. You know, who's the injured party? Is the injured party the city? Do you actually have a code or provision or a rule or something that says what the remedy is? Right? And if the remedy is, you know, the, 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 the person who committed the transgression has civil liability. Well, are we going to sue ourselves or sue one of our own? Is that a satisfactory remedy, right? So I think really the injured party in this kind of dynamic primarily is the, is the council, is the governing body, right? And there's a lot of harm that needs to be repaired, particularly for council member Smith, right? Who has to go back to council later and now say, do you trust me? And so, you know, even if there was a split vote on going into executive session, I think it's a fiduciary responsibility of each council member to honor the confidentiality that council as a council has determined they want. So, and a good practical tool on that is before you leave executive session, particularly on matters subject to negotiation, you might ask yourselves, okay, of, of all the confidential information that we've discussed during this session, which information, if any, leaves, leaves this room and who are our spokespeople? And, and that'll serve you well, because I know sometimes it can be difficult. And right after the executive session, somebody may be asking you, hey, you know, what happened? But if we have a plan and know who our spokespeople are and we're all committed to that, then I think we'll have few of any internal problems regarding how we either conduct or what happens in follow-up to executive sessions. The second piece of my hypothetical here is what if council member Smith actually, you know, opposed the purchase? And instead of telling him the, the water rights owner, what, what, what the city's willing to pay, instead approaches the landowner and says, hey, you know, council talked about buying your water rights. We're going to make you an offer, but I'm telling you, don't waste your time because I'm going to do everything I can as council member to make sure we don't buy your water. Do we have an issue there as well? Yeah, I think the answer is, we, we, we certainly do. You know, that, that individual council member doesn't have to, a- at the time the decision made, obviously can vote against the transaction. It doesn't have to be the main cheerleader of the decision that's reached. But I think as part of a fiduciary role, that one not actively undermine the voice of council and that one respect the voice of council, even if it's arrived at by a, a split vote. So those are dynamics to be attuned to as council as well. Lastly, on the transparency piece, you already have these tools in place and you do great things. Just things, of course, to think about if you have meeting issues every once in a while. Make sure you give the agenda the time and attention it deserves, have norms of conduct about how you as council members determine whether things, whether and when things get put on the agenda. There is a risk aspect to that. There are principles under the open meetings law that say you can face potential liability for putting on the agenda and taking action on an item that was not properly noticed on the agenda. So be careful there. I hope that your meetings are going well in terms of quorum and civility. We've had some interesting things going on in the front range over the last year or two. Then I, then I hope you're not seeing up there, but make sure you have plans for dealing with those issues. Though we are informal at local government, some level of formality i- is important. And then as a council, determine whatever process guidelines and rules for how you approach motions and decisions. Make sure they're simple, useful, practical rules that help you as a council facilitate doing your job and don't end up taking on a life of their own, right? Finally, I think it's a wise council that finds time for self-examination if meetings aren't going well, no matter how the concern is raised. And particularly, you, you know, even if one member of council has a concern that they want to share, I think council as a council ought to in- ensure that there's a safe spot for raising those concerns and addressing them. Maybe not everyone gets satisfaction out of the discussion, but there ought to be a safe place for council to have a discussion, engagements and self-examination if things aren't going well. And I've listed on this slide, some of the examples of issues that have come up that we've heard of at, at SARS, when they call either myself or executive director and say, hey, do you have examples of rules of procedure or rules of decorum that can help us get at these kinds of issues about excessive informality or how we handle public comments? Or what about being recognized by the chair? Or our frustration is that a, a smaller group of the council is dominating the discussions all the time. So people don't have an equal opportunity to speak. How do we get at those issues? I think at the end of the day, resolving, talking about having an honest, open discussion about where those problems are is all in councils' wheelhouse, and it's a wise council that spends some time on those things if they're cropping up. Okay? Suggestion four is commit yourself to ethical conduct, right? We don't have too many ethical scandals in Colorado local government. You know, ethical scandals are interesting to read about. Sometimes they're all almost fun and amusing to read about when, when they happen at the state or county level and not the municipal level, right? As soon as it's council, I love reading about it at the state level, but not at the local level. Make sure that you familiarize yourself with the city's ordinances on ethics. I just want to touch on three things real quickly, conflicts of interest, confidential information and gifts. So we all know, just a refresher here, you have in your code at Article zero-two-zero-point-zero-four-zero, which I've got on the screen there, your rules regarding conflicts of interest. That basically says when you as a council member, right, are in a situation where council is going to be taking some kind of action on a transaction that affects your own personal interest, then you have an obligation to follow certain procedures. You have to disclose your conflict of interest, right? And I think maybe a head nod will help me here. You do that on the record at the meeting, isn't that right? Okay, you have to recuse yourself from the discussion and the vote. And you also have to refrain from influencing your fellow members of council regarding that particular matter in which you have a conflict of interest. Couple of practical tips, I don't know for sure if your code says whether or not you need to leave the room, but do you do that? Yeah, it's not, whether it's required or not, I think it's good practice. When you make your disclosure, I would commend to you to go beyond just simply saying I have a conflict of interest and then standing up and leaving the room. Because sometimes I've even sat in meetings where it's kind of like everyone else who's left in the room, their hair's on fire, wondering what the conflict is. So use that opportunity to explain what your conflict is. It has to be obviously accurate disclosure, but it really is your chance to show everyone in the room that you understand your obligations and you take seriously your commitment to the code of ethics. And here is the conflict of interest that I have, and that will tamp down speculation about what the particular situation is. Also, another practical suggestion to you is that if you've done all your analysis, you've determined you don't have a conflict of interest, but there's still some grumblings or some gossiping, or somebody believes there's an appearance of a conflict of interest. Don't underestimate the value of a curative disclosure where you simply say to your fellow council members and the folks in the room where you're coming from. And then people will know where you're coming from. It can be as easy as saying, council, just before we start this discussion of this liquor application, I want to make a comment. I want to make it clear to everyone that yes, I do know the applicant as a friend, but I have no financial relationship to this transaction. We are simply personal acquaintances. I do not have a conflict of interest or any interest in this application. And I intend to make my decision on this application fairly and solely according to our criteria. And that kind of disclosure can be helpful to everyone. It shows that you've thought about the issue and you have to walk the walk, of course, in following only the criteria. But if you feel in good faith, you can do that, that kind of disclosure can be helpful. All right? On confidential information, I, I'm not sure, I was not able to find it quickly in your code, but there is a provision of state law, obviously, that says do not disclose or use any confidential information that you gain as an elected official for your own personal benefit. And if there's any uncertainty as to whether a piece of information is confidential, then you simply want to ask whoever provided that to you. If it's the town, city attorney, it may be pretty obvious because it's attorney-client memo. But if it's like in my water rights example, that appraisal of the water rights, or perhaps your city manager provides you some deep background. It's simply the process of asking the question, is this appraisal for our eyes only? Is this document work product for our executive session? Those kinds of things. And then, of course, on gifts, I don't know whether you each get a monthly salary for serving on council. Perhaps you do, maybe it's a, you're right, so it's always a very small amount, right? So I'm here to remind you, of course, that it's not the, the big salary, nor is it the lavish gifts that bring us to public service, right? And you have within your city code a prohibition on gifts to elected officials. Take a look at that. I didn't put the citation there, but it's in Article zero-one-zero-point-zero-six-zero of your city code. And basically boils down to this, your rule says essentially do not accept any gift, right? From any person in relation to your role as a public official. If it's clear to a reasonable person that the gift, right, is being given to curry your vote on something or to influence how you're going to act as a public official or is given to you primarily to reward you for some action that you've taken as a public official. And so much about gifts is just looking at it from that common sensible, reasonable approach and saying, if this gift looks odd, the timing is weird, these are unusual circumstances. Yeah, I know that person is a friend, but why am I being asked to go to a fancy dinner the week they have their hearing in front of council? Then those are gifts, certainly that you would want to decline. Okay? Commitment five, commit to supporting the city structure, know every municipal organization, no matter how large or small. Everyone in it has a job description, right? So it's important to understand your job description to ensure the organization functions at a high level and to help protect yourself from risk, including the risk of personal liability. A little bit of background here is that, as a reminder, we have good protections in Colorado for you as elected officials on liability, right? But the question sometimes is, I hope it wasn't your first question, but you, you know, can, can I get sued in the job of elected official? And the answer is yes, right? Under Colorado law, there are good protections for you under the Colorado Governmental Immunity Act. And that statute, what I'm talking about here is whether you as a public official can be sued individually and potentially be held individually liable for a tort claim under Colorado law. And we have the statute that basically says the city and by extension, its insurance company, SARS, will protect you and pay judgments entered against you for acts or omissions that you take as a public official. With two important qualifiers, so long as you're acting within the scope of your employment and not acting in a willful and wanton manner. The job description piece is the scope of employment, sounds like an odd phrase for elected officials, but that's just the term that's used in the statute. And it simply means everyone needs to know and respect their job description. You know, simple examples of that is we all know who has the authority to issue tickets in the city, right? That's the police chief and the peace officers, right? So it's not council's job. And we all know that the city clerk has the power to, and the authority to issue business licenses likely, right? Which means it's not council's job. But I will tell you, and luckily it's only once in a blue moon, but once in a while we'll face claim situations where the allegation is, yeah, I get it as the claimant. I know that the, the city clerk's responsible for issuing the, the, the business license. But my allegation is that there were elected or appointed officials lurking in the background and directing, right? That my permit not be issued or renewed, or they were somehow interfering. And you can see that that's not a good place to be. It's simply about respecting the structure. And it runs all directions. Sometimes your administrative staff who's charged with carrying out and making final administrative decisions is going to have to make tough decisions, including ones that council may not like. But nonetheless, if you have a council already assigned that final authority to the administrative staff, then that's where it needs to end. Okay? The other phrase there in the statute is, you have these protections as long as you're not engaging in willful and wanton conduct. That's simply a fancy phrase for conduct that in my view, it can be described this way. It's conduct that's intentionally undertaken, that's designed to injure someone's rights and is taken with reckless disregard to what their rights are. And I can boil it down to an even simpler phrase. I simply call it bad stuff, right? And so the takeaway there is each of us, yes, each of us holds one-seventh. You know, from one perspective, it's, oh, I hold one-seventh of the power of council, right? But the misperception that can get one into trouble under the willful and wanton is, hey, I'm going to use my cloak of governmental authority. Since I've got that, I'm going to use my cloak of governmental authority. And if you are misusing your cloak of governmental authority to do bad things to people for the wrong reasons, that's where that willful and wanton concept can come into play. Very few and far between that we get those kind of claims, but it's important to understand where the parameters are. Okay? Some tips, just to protect yourself from liability risks, not e- not each of these tips really translates readily into a willful and wanton type exposure, but they're just tips about respecting the allocations of responsibility within the organization and protecting yourselves as an individual elected officials. Again, understand the job description and stay within it. Recognize that primarily with regard to risk to third parties, right? Your role as council is a group role, right? And the council does its job primarily by meeting as a body and exercising responsibility by voting on matters that come in front of the council at public meetings. And that's a great place to be from a risk perspective, right? Because it's very hard to be individually sued for an action that the council takes at a council meeting. Let's say you made a tough land use decision, right? And someone's saying, well, I'm going to sue, you know, council member Willman and, and you only because of that decision that council made. That sounds pretty tough from the get-go. And, 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 and in reality, it is, right? Because you have legislative privilege protection, you may have some quasi judicial decision-making protections, and you have the protection of the fact that it's a decision made by the group. So the flip side of that coin is if whenever you're thinking in terms of, this is something that I would like to do, particularly if it's going to have some effect on the rights of third parties, and you're saying, I think I can do this, I would like to do this as council. As a council member, you want to make sure that you're properly authorized to do so. Okay? Not so much a liability risk, but sometimes we see that last concept bubble up in like the internal issue that council faces. Where sometimes, and I don't know mayor, whether you have this, whether at each meeting you go down the dais, maybe near the end of the meeting, and each member can make a report. And have, maybe make some council member comments, but you might have that and you know, be going down the dais and I say, what, yes, mayor, I, I'd like to make a comment. You know, since, since our last meeting, I did this. If the reaction of all the other council members is, you did what? Right? That, that may not be a liability risk, right? But it's an issue for council in terms of finding time to have a discussion of what are our norms and understandings of each other in terms of how we represent council and how we behave as council members in between meetings on behalf of this council. So that's a good place to find time to chat about that issue. From my perspective, it's because we want you to feel supported. And I don't want some interloping third party to be able to wiggle in there and say something that was done in between meetings was not authorized or was improper. So I went, if people are asked to do something between meetings, then counsel out of discussion to make sure that there's authority to do that, right? So related to this, adherence to the organizational structure is important, perhaps particularly important in the area of employee relationships. You as council, you do have a certain role in personnel matters, but it's not all encompassing. You have a broader role, except for your direct reports. And I suspect council has just a few direct reports that include the city manager, city attorney, municipal judge. Maybe that's all of them. And you want to embrace that relationship. Those relationships are the ones where you want to make sure you have a mutual agreed upon and predictable and recurring way to do your performance reviews and to check in on how things are going. But with regard to the rest of the organization, your charter already says that the city manager is the responsible for personnel matters downstream of the city manager. And that's a great place to be from your perspective because that protects you from risk. Our defense attorneys in personnel matters, when they try to pull a council member in, assuming there's nothing else going on, we can point to the charter and say, you can't pull that elected official in this case because it's clear they had no authority or role in these personnel matters. So make sure that whatever the council levels of involvement is, and it's usually just the direct reports and the high level stuff like the budget and so on, make sure that doesn't devolve into getting individually and improperly involved in personnel issues for people who aren't your direct reports. Similarly, don't engage in or facilitate activities that bypass the city's chain of command. Right? And I know, I, I, I've been around for quite a while, that I know sometimes, you know, sometimes it can happen. Someone in the organization comes up to you as a council member and, and I talk to you about my boss, right? You want to be prepared as an elected official ever response to that. You know, it could be, we love and appreciate our employees, but I as a council member and we as a council don't even get involved in personnel issues at that level. If it's one of those personnel issues, it's got a lot of hair and warts on it, and for some reason it keeps cropping up in your ear. Your point of accountability, your point Your point of accountability, your point of advisement is your city manager on that. And I want you to, you know, feel encouraged to have trust and faith in the fact that your manager. Right? If it really is one of those situations with a lot of hair and warts on it. And there's a need to know, just for a need to know basis, then they'll do that, not as an invitation that. We all get involved in the personnel matter, but maybe we need to be coordinated in case the press asks a question or something. Like that. Okay? I'm going to pivot just a little bit on this idea of the city structure and just put up a couple of concepts that. I hope are of interest to you. If you'd like to do more reading on them, I put the name of the author in the book here. That touches on this, but I think. Though I don't harp on it too much, in every organization, there is that difference between policy and administration. And it reflects in your charter and throughout your organizational documents. And the city council for our municipal corporation, the city of Glenwood Springs, right? Is the part of the entity that's uniquely qualified to deal with the big picture stuff. The vision determining the wants and the needs of the community at that large level and determining how we put governmental resources on that. Dealing with the policy governance issues, not the management or administration side, your charter. Has that distinction there and already makes assignments to your city manager and supervisors in that regard. So you as council. You do your best work and you're most protected from liability risk as well. When your energy and efforts are focused on the big picture stuff, you as council have the longest time horizon. Of anyone in the organization, you're thinking. Master plan, five year capital utility plan, where do we want this community to be? In the long run and looking at this author, Mr. Carver's. Thoughts on these issues from a different perspective, right? Every organization can sort of look at where it focuses its efforts in hierarchy. And individuals within the organization can think about where do we, right? As staff or as managers or as a board, commission or council spend our energy and for council. Right? Where you do your best work, where most of your authority responsibility lies is in the upper tiers here and then you can rely upon your staff. And your city manager as your point of accountability for things that have already been delegated. The frontline management supervising supervision and employment issues. It does translate into this in terms of your relationship with your direct reports, be it the manager, judge or attorney. While the council is made up of individuals, each with their own differing perspectives and priorities, it is a single body. And it's not a group of seven bosses, right? The council is but one boss. Right? So you as a council want to resolve to speak with one voice to your direct reports. And you know, maybe, maybe a seven oh or a head nod direction to your manager. Deborah's going to feel more comfortable with that, but it doesn't matter whether it's four, three or seven zero, as long as the council commits to speak with. The one voice of council. And what that means is in difficult situations. You know, maybe some nights the mayor asks. The council, let's give, let's give some direction to our city manager and you go around the dais and. Each and every one of you has a different idea of what the direction ought to be. And that situation won't be resolved by saying, manager, have you got your direction? That's a situation that ultimately council is responsible for resolving, maybe the mayor. Sees and in that dark art that mayors perform so well sees that, hey, this is an intractable issue tonight. We're going to have to lay this over. It's going to take a while to get there on this issue and that's just fine. One of your greatest powers and prerogatives is the council is to take the time you need, right? To do your job as council. So in those situations, maybe you lay it over, you work on it some. But you want to commit yourself to sorting out and reconciling your priorities so that you speak with one voice to your direct reports. Because that's where you get. Clarity of what your direction is, that's where you get accountability. To your voice, right? And so that's a great place to land as a council. Finally, I want to talk about due process just briefly. In a few minutes that I have left, as you know. You do deal once in a while with actual applications or cases where you have an applicant in front of you and that's where a new set of rules, the due process rules and engagement kick in. We know what due process hearings are about because that's when we have a noticed public hearing, right? We're going to have a public hearing where everyone gets noticed and the decision that we make in that kind of process is one. Where the decision is going to be based solely on the information that's provided at the hearing. And the decision is going to be made according to the criteria that exist already in the city code. And the decision has to be made by a fair and impartial decision maker. That's us as council. On the bottom of this slide, I've put a link to a webinar that we recorded at Sursa about 25 minutes. With additional summary of the special rules that apply when you're in one of these processes. It's called a quasi judicial process and you're essentially acting like judges deciding a particular case. It doesn't seem like a court proceeding, but it's essentially the same concepts in just a less. Formal atmosphere. So some tips on your handling of quasi judicial matters. It means then, since we are the decision maker now, the judge of this particular case. It means that we have to limit our involvement to just our participation at the public hearing. Quite unlike policymaking, right? Making these judicial type decisions is not something where we can lobby people and be lobbied. Right? That kind of thing, that's impermissible, that's called an ex parte communication. So it's important. That you have tools and tactics for reminding people. Now they may approach you at city market. They know there's a big development application on the council agenda next week and they say, council member. Can I talk to you about that development application? I want to tell you why you should vote no. We just need to have tools to say, look, it's not that I don't want to hear from you. But I can't engage with folks outside of the hearing because that wouldn't be fair to the, to everyone else, right? And so that's, people wonder, go, where does all this come from? Right? The due process laws, no one shall be deprived of property without due process of law. And we find over the years in finding ways to help elected officials explain this to the constituents, we remind them, hey. Doesn't that seem right? If it were your application, that fundamental fairness with council. That I can't talk to people outside of the hearing about your application, right? Without you present. That's why we do everything. At the hearing. Make sure you remain neutral, right? You don't want to be. The council member who's quoted in the paper the week before. The hearing on the marijuana dispensary. Quoted as saying, I will never vote for another marijuana dispensary in the city. That shows impartiality, prejudgment, right? And that can disqualify you from the hearing. Obviously, if you have a conflict of interest, you want to recuse yourself. And then finally, make sure you base your decision on the standards that apply. Right? And this is now, you know, we're at the end of the hearing, we're moving into deliberations. And that's where we're applying the standards. I always encourage, we love at Sursa. When you as the quasi judicial decision makers engage in deliberations, we love it. Right? It's a great place because that's where you're now explaining. To everyone who's there, right? Why you're about to make the decision you're about to make. That's where an applicant gets an understanding of what your decision is going to be. And the other thing you're doing is making a record. Right? Of the reasons for your decision. Sometimes it doesn't get off to a very good start, right? Maybe you finish a great hearing and the mayor says, who would like to start? Our discussions and I say, mayor, I'll start. I'm going to vote against this development plan because, because I just don't like it. Not, not the greatest start, but we can fix that. By mutually supporting each other's councils, simply by using what I call Sam's rule of why. If another council's member simply says to me, hey, Sam, why don't you like it? And I can say, explain myself. Oh, I don't like it because it's too tall. Oh, well, maybe now we're getting somewhere, right? Because the staff report has already said that the development plan. Is proposing a height of forty two feet. And the height limit in the district for that particular project is thirty five feet. Hey, but maybe they're allowed to request a variance. Now we're going to start a discussion, right? About the actual criteria surrounding the height limit and that's an awesome place to be. So we found and I've found over the years that as long as we test each other in our discussions as council members, we're going to get to a good place. Okay? Any questions or thoughts around quasi judicial stuff? How are hearings going?
You know, my impression is that our quasi judicial hearings are going fairly well. I think COVID, as we went into it. We had some fits and starts and I don't think anybody knew. How to get through it, but I think our city attorney. Did a fantastic job of allowing us continue to process those applications and not really slowing things down. So. I think that was pretty key. So shout out to Carl. And Sam, just out of curiosity, what, how much more content do you have? Not to push you along or anything, but.
I have one slide left.
Okay, just, just curious. People like their dinner, their dinner time, including myself.
Absolutely, absolutely. Absolutely. One last suggestion on quasi judicial stuff and I'm sure Carl's passed on these thoughts. If you have particularly controversial hearings coming up. We found it a great thing to do from your perspective as a council is to make some comments at the outset of the hearing to lay the table. About how the process is going to go. And you know, some announcements of, okay, we're going to get. The staff report, then the applicant presentation and then public, it'll be your opportunity to comment and then we're going to ask questions that. Sort of helps calm everybody down and knows that they're going to be heard and hey, we're going to have a good process here. And that's a good way to kick off a particularly controversial hearing. My last commitment to you is to embrace. Wise leadership, which I think includes a number of things, but among the ones that I would commend to you are. Commit yourselves as a body to a no surprises approach. Your meetings, your interactions ought not to have surprises or gotcha type moments. Commit yourself to as a council to dealing effectively with discord. We know. That every governing body, right, has diverse personalities, perspectives, interests. And there's likely to be disagreements, but people can have disagreements without being disagreeable. And it's a wise council that finds ways to talk about and resolve. Issues of discord among the council, no matter where they're coming from. At the end of the day. You shouldn't let discord drive your agenda or how you interact with each other or your citizens or your staff. Other takeaway is in committing to wise leadership, recognize that particularly in the civil rights area. Certain types of risk profiles from a claim perspective are influenced. By the way that public officials interact with applicants or constituents in particular. Civil rights claims plaintiffs and plaintiff's attorneys try to make much of any facts that they can find. That might suggest there's some whiff of retaliation. Or malicious action by elected or appointed officials. Not easy because sometimes it feels like you could get a bullseye on you. But using the courtesy tact and this diplomacy will disarm. Those would be claimants who are trying to get a charge out of elected or appointed officials in terms of. Potentially trying to support some claim they think that they have. And then finally, keep in mind, of course, that you set the tone for the whole organization in terms. Treatment of employees, citizens in the business community and that you're the stewards of the city's best interest and assets. With that, mayor. Counsel, I want to thank you very, very much for your time. I put on the last slide there some additional resources. For you all and it was a pleasure to get to visit with you all. Any, any questions? I'll go ahead and take those, but otherwise, thank you very much, mayor. Thank you, counsel, for the opportunity and staff to visit with you all today.
Sam, thank you very much. We really appreciate it. Any questions for Sam? No? Okay.
Thank you, Sam.
Carl, did you want to speak now or did you have something you wanted to say after Sam left us?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to thank Sam. I really appreciate him coming in and it's always nice to hear another attorney say what I say. So you guys don't think I'm just making it up. Always, always grateful and gratifying. Also shout out to Sam is he, even though the name has changed, he was one of the founding members of my law firm way back, way, way back in the day. Beyond that, I just sent you an email. That is an update on some, on the hearing coming up tonight, note from the applicant, please read that. Before you come back and. I will also address it briefly at the beginning of the hearing. So with that, I'm done. Thanks.
Thanks, Carl. Thank you again, Sam. We really appreciate it. I think this might be the second or third time I've heard this and it's never boring and it's always helpful. And it's a great reminder.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a great evening.
All right. Thanks, everybody. We will reconvene at six fifteen. We'll see you then.